Twenty-four regular meeting of the Mill Creek City Council to order at six o'clock P M. Straight up, we'll begin with the Pledge of Allegiance, which Councilmember Allison please. Adrian, roll call, please.
Mayor Holtzcliff.
Here.
Mayor Pro Tem Vinyel.
Here.
Councilmember Cavalry.
Here.
Here. Councilmember Steckler.
Here. Are you reading this? I don't think it's working.
Um, our mic's off. Joe.
Mic is hot, mic is on, but it's.
Uh.
Okay.
There we go. Now we got him, now we got, now we're on.
Councilmember Cavalry.
Here.
Councilmember Steckler.
Very here.
Councilmember Allison.
Here.
Councilmember Duque.
Here.
And Councilman Paddock.
Councilmember Paddock advised me that he is traveling for work this week and is unable to attend tonight, so can we have a motion to excuse, please?
Motion to excuse.
Second.
All's in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Motion passes six to zero. Audience communication, anyone like to address the council? Seeing no heads in the chambers and I'm not seeing anyone online, so. We'll move on to our presentations, the first one, I'm going to hand over to the Mayor Pro Tem to read the proclamation regarding International Women's Day.
Thank you, Mayor. Whereas Women's Day first took place on February twenty-eighth nineteen oh nine in New York City. As a national observance organized by the Socialist Party to honor the one-year anniversary of the garment worker strikes in New York. And whereas in nineteen eighty, President Jimmy Carter issued the first presidential proclamation. Declaring the week of March eighth as National Women's Week. And in nineteen eighty-seven, Congress passed Public Law one hundred dash nine, designating March as Women's History Month. And whereas in nineteen ten, Washington became the fifth state to enact women's suffrage. And our state's role helped spark the campaign that resulted in the Nineteenth Amendment to the U S Constitution in nineteen twenty. And whereas this year's theme for International Women's Day is invest in women, accelerate progress. Looking at world crisis from geopolitical conflict. To soaring poverty levels and escalating impact of climate change. By investing in women, we can speed the transition towards a healthier, safer and more equal world for for all. And whereas International Women's Day is a time to reflect on progress made. To call for change and to celebrate acts of courage and determination. By ordinary women who have paid, who have played an extraordinary role in the history of their countries and their communities. The world has made unprecedented advancements, but no country has achieved gender equality. Now therefore, I, Stephanie Vinyel, the Mayor Pro Tem of the City of Mill Creek, on behalf of the City Council. Do hereby proclaim March eighth twenty twenty-four as International Women's Day in the City of Mill Creek. Thank you.
Thank you, Stephanie. Uh, other order of business for presentations is a swearing in of a new officers, Chief White.
Thank you, Mayor, Mayor Pro Tem, it's a privilege of mine to introduce Officer Denny Tran. Denny Tran just graduated from the academy a week ago, right?
Yes.
So we're proud to have him out on the road, he's actually in training right now, some additional training before hitting the road in his F T O program. But we're going to welcome our newest officer, I'm sorry, I'm a little bit of a respiratory issue going on, it's not COVID. Um, but uh, so it might take me a little bit longer than usual here. Alright, go ahead and raise your right hand, repeat after me. I state your name. Being first duly sworn upon my oath. Do depose and say. On my honor. I will never betray my badge. My integrity. My character. Or the public trust. I will always have the courage to hold myself. And others accountable for our actions. I will always uphold the Constitution. My community. And the agency I serve, excuse me. I will fairly and impartially. Enforce the Constitution. And the laws of the United States. And the State of Washington. And the ordinances of the City of Mill Creek. Courteously and appropriately. Without fear or favor. Malice or ill will. Congratulations. Yeah, we'll invite council to come down and take a picture with Officer Tran.
Yeah.
Director Todd, take it away.
Thank you. Mayor, Mayor Pro Tem, council, we're here to do a little update on our waste management. Contract, and so I'm going to lead you through a little bit of history quickly and then get down to the main issue was to talk about the administrative fee. Thanks, Adrian and Koo, for getting that set up for me, I appreciate it, so. A little bit of status from like last December, remember, we've talked with Waste Management and agreed on contract basics. On the contract basics, we they developed rates, we looked at those last time, both residential and commercial. We've been working on the contract update, overall, the intent was to modernize this somewhat and correct some existing internal inconsistencies, it's a very thick contract, we've had like six hundred plus comments. Of back and forth trying to fix things up. Um, lots, and I said right there, lots of passes back and forth, we have yet to finish those things. I hope to get that done here pretty quick, in the next week, we've got a meeting. Um, next, we really need to get some direction on this admin fee, we talked about it before, but didn't get resolution on it, so I would like to talk about that primarily tonight. Again, a little bit of a recap from before, from last December. These are the main things that happen in the contract, and those were minimal things, we updated the recycling list to kind of match ten years later, what's important, what's valuable in the recycling stream. Uh, added into contamination charge after two warnings, we talked about that, that's really not an onerous kind of things, but they found that this twenty-five dollars or hundred dollars kind of works pretty well. In intent is not to collect a lot of money, but the intent is to encourage people to think about doing a better job recycling. Uh, we've retained six city events in there, we need to give them a list of those events, but six is plenty for what we've done in the past, this is where they provide carts. And hauling trash away from things like the Mill Creek Festival or Extravaganza or the Drunk or Treatable, we decided would be. Uh, there's a thing in the contract. That we had not done a long time, I can't remember ever having done it for all the years I've been here. Our contract actually allowed to have a city cleanup day, where you'd haul your stuff out on a Saturday and leave that couch on the. On the, on the, uh, out in front of your house and they would pick it up, and we have not done that thankfully. Waste Management tells me those often go terribly wrong, so we, so we changed that. It's the guy who puts the couch out at three o'clock in the afternoon instead of ten in the morning that ends up with a couch on the. On the, uh, on the, on the curb, so we're trying to avoid that. So they they call them Think Green Events, nothing special by that, uh, one of the council members, uh, Councilmember Duque brought it up. This is not to replace the kind of things like Kiwanis has been doing some recycling events for electronics or shredding events. In years past, we've had hazardous waste events. The idea is this is something about recycling and reusing, and so they've said there'd be twice a year, they would work with this on setting up special. Special whatever makes sense to us, if we're having a recycling event for electronics, maybe we also do hazardous waste collection at that same event, so that's the idea here, nothing. Nothing extraordinary that's going to change what we already do, but kind of amplify what we do. Uh, talked about customer service, they found that really, really low use in the evenings and in the weekends of live calls, and so they've gone throughout the Pacific Northwest to this. Customer services Monday through Friday, eight to five local time. And then having a lot of tools in terms of the chat capability, the automated response capability, you can text, you can email. Leave messages for twenty-four seven, three sixty-five. And that's working pretty well for people. And the last thing is we changed the inflation index from C P I. You to C P I water, sewer and trash, and we talked about that before, it's actually been better in the last couple of years, but it's more reflective of the kind of cost increases they see. We looked at this chart, remember, we talked about the fact that we have all services, all three, all three services every week. And you look at the column for the U T C rate, so in Stonewash County, uncorporated areas, it's a little bit lower than ours, it's some of the smaller cart sizes. My like terrace a little bit lower than our new rate. At smaller cart sizes, but those are every other week services, and we've decided that's a premium thing we'd like to have in Mill Creek, because you have, don't have to remember which week you're not recycling or your yard waste, it's every week. For everything, so we've got some pretty good rates there. Uh, since we talked back in December, uh, Waste Management also got me the numbers for the City of Stonewash, who was on a Republic. Contract and their prices are about the same or a little bit higher than what we're getting, so I think we're convinced these are, they're giving us good prices from the. From the fact that they've been servicing us for a long time in another community. So we're down to the administrative fee, um, we've talked about this before, it's a fee that is applied to. The services that you as a customer, uh, get from them, and it's just one point five percent of the revenue is how we currently collect that. Uh, it's about fifty-two thousand dollars last year. Uh, which is indicative of about a three month, three million dollar overall piece of business, three million dollars times one and a half percent is about fifty thousand bucks. Uh, most cities set it higher, we've been talking about this, nobody's at one and a half percent, everybody's got something more, it's in. Put some numbers down there, Marysville does their own trash, but they got recycling yard waste from Waste Management. Muckel, Theo, Redmond, Duval, Monlake Terrace, I just got the number, theirs isn't a percentage, it was a fixed number out of their contract, but it's four hundred thousand dollars a year. That they've got wrapped into their rates when they, when you look at those rates that are on that chart. And then it's got some inflation adjustments to it. In the past, I think we've looked at administrative fee and said, ah, it doesn't have to be much, we have a little bit of work to manage the contract, a little bit of monitor, a little bit to monitor the performance. We handle a certain number of direct customer calls, people call the city, I've got a problem with my traction, so we send them over to. To Waste Management, or we deal with issues about the dumpsters that aren't, lids aren't closed or those kinds of things. But it's not a lot of work. Um, and then staff support for things, I put Think Green here, but when we work with them on part, on partnering events. There are some staff time involved with helping. Figure out the logistics of getting carts to events, et cetera. The other thing is it's hard to monetize, but it's also kind of an acknowledgement of there's a lot of wear and tear, these are very heavy vehicles on our residential roads. You know, think about the previous truck that comes by your house now, there's a lot of Amazon trucks, but these are the big ones. And so, not really monetized very well, but that small amount of money, that fifty thousand bucks a year, hopefully kind of. Helps us out with our wear and tear on our roads. That's traditionally, and I'm going to ask you to look at these other kinds of future things to think about. As we set that administrative fee. We are going to be faced with future environmental sustainability kinds of initiatives, our climate action. A climate action plan is required in comp plans. It's not required for our comp plan, because the legislature didn't get it done in time. But anybody who's got a comp plan update that's doing twenty twenty-five or beyond has to have a new element in their comp plan called Climate Action Plans or Sustainability. We will need to do that, uh, that's the kind of thing that I think we could use this money for to hire. Some either consultants that do it or part-time or term limited people, for example, there I put down Civic Spark Fellow, we had an opportunity last year to get a. Fresh graduate out of college. Freedom Grad School, who says, I want to be a planner someday, and I like climate, climate kinds of things, and it was thirty, thirty-one thousand dollars that we would, would have been able to get somebody for eleven months to do this kind of work. The City of Maple Valley did that and got a lot of success out of it, so I'm dreaming about that kind of thing if we had more money to spend on it. Recycling education materials, Waste Management puts a lot of stuff out, but but making them special for Mill Creek or printing. Five thousand copies to hand out to five thousand places is not in the contract, that's something we would do. Uh, different kinds of support for events, you know, if we're going to have, going to support the. Recycling event that Kiwanis does, paying the staff overtime, you could say, hey, here's some money, so we don't feel so bad about, it's got to be all volunteers, and so we've struggled in the past with how do we support events? Marketing contests, just put some ideas down there, if you had a little bit of money that you felt like this was going towards. Our trash, uh, recycling and composting contract, it would help us out. Uh, we used to do hazardous waste recycling events, those typically come with some price to them in terms of looking out for doing the right things with them. Um, in the past, some of those have been free, but I think there's more, more complex now, or if you want to have somebody. Come and do things like styrofoam, there's no value in styrofoam, so I have a feeling you end up paying somebody to come get that styrofoam and. And do the right thing with it, so that would, again, with a little bit of money to add for those kinds of events. And then finally, the organics law implementation. It's coming to us in a few years, and it's kind of unknown what that's going to be, but there's going to be a lot of education. We're going to be in a position where everybody has to put their food waste into an organics collection. Uh, process. And I'm still not quite sure how we're going to do that for apartment dwellers. And Waste Management says, yes, this is going to be a problem too, so that's coming to us, but that's one of the things I think in the future that we would also have, we had some extra revenue, could apply towards some staff time. Not enough money to hire a person, I'm not proposing to hire a person for this. But I'm proposing if we had a little bit of money that we maybe hire contractors, part-time folks, or feel better about. Those kinds of things. Next steps, we already, uh, in December, you already changed, uh, the the code to make it for a ten-year term. So we're done with that. Tonight, really, we'd like to talk about the C admin fee and get some direction, I'm suggesting between three and five percent, still less than everybody else that was on the chart, would give us an opportunity to have a little more, more revenue to work with. Um, continue with administrative and legal review. Got some admin details to provide the right map and some event lists, but those are minor details, and like I said, the future organics law, that's going to come back to you in the future, not for tonight, not required for the. Contract, we probably will have to open up a contract in a couple of years and say, okay, here's what it means for organics and apartments, for instance. So with that, down for questions and comments?
Councilmember Steckler.
So, uh, just to confirm a couple of things, so the administrative fee. Um, you're recommending three to five percent. And that is money that we, the city, retain. And use toward, you know, some of the costs associated with our garbage pickup, okay? And, uh, we were at one and a half percent, correct? Um, but you're recommending a, you know, doubling, more than doubling it, and is that just so? Is that for the, the cost that you? Um, are these costs that you would like to see, or are these costs that we are going to get, so we don't really have a choice?
I would say it's more the, more the former, I think it's an opportunity, for instance, if we said. Here's another fifty thousand dollars by doubling the fees, if it went from fifty thousand dollars a year, kind of total revenue to a hundred thousand, there's fifty thousand there that we would say, there's thirty-one thousand dollars to pay for the Civic Spark Fellow. Next year to work on that sustainability plan, for instance. Without this, we're going to have to take thirty thousand bucks out of something else. And that didn't stop us last year, but that was, gave us pause, and you know, every time we talk to our. Accounting and finance folks, we want to add something, we got to think about what we trade off on it, so that, that's the kind of thing I'm proposing. Very few, I think, but we could avoid most of these costs for a while, but we will be faced with having to come up with a comp plan element. For sustainability and climate action, and that, if we pay a consultant, it will be a lot more than fifty thousand bucks to do it. So this is a way to sneak up on it over the next couple of years, by, by, by using Civic Sparks Fellows or others. Short-term consultants. And when it's due in twenty twenty-nine, we'll be in good shape.
I, one other question, also, you, you mentioned one of the slides that. Waste Management is agreeable to, to putting on a hazardous waste. Event with us?
I think it's the kind of thing we can talk, we've not talked specifically about hazard waste, remember hazardous waste is handled through the county. They don't collect hazardous waste, but this would be. I'm thinking a Think Green event, we're going to say to, say to the community. You get compost and regular recycling every week at your house, but there's those things in your garage you hated to throw away, it's batteries, it's fluorescent light bulbs, it's styrofoam that you've been, don't want to throw in the trash. It's whatever it is. Set up an event where we'd have a truck to collect this and a truck to collect that, and we might have to pay somebody to come and be the truck collection for that hazardous waste. Maybe we use volunteers from our volunteer groups. But there's some costs associated with those kinds of things to get rid of stuff that has no recycling value.
Right, and we have the volunteers, we, the problem has been the cost of doing it, so they're not going to cover the cost of a hazardous waste. Event.
They don't do it.
They'll help do the, set it up and work with this, but the dump fees, if somebody has to be paid to take away this hazardous waste, they're not promising to do that.
They're not, okay. Okay, thank you.
Councilmember Cavalry.
Thanks, Mayor. Excuse me. Uh, Director Todd, I, I worry about this a little bit, because it looks an awful lot like a utility tax. On, on waste or trash, whatever. That we're going to call it. Um, three to five percent to, to. Collect on what might happen down the road. Th- this is one of those. Wax like a duck, it's a duck type of situations, I, I don't think I'm going to support it. Um, I think it's a bridge to open that door to utility taxes, and I, and I oppose it. Thanks.
Director Todd, can you clarify, this isn't a three, a charge on the. Ratepayers bills, this is.
It shows up on your bill, so if you look at your bill. I should have brought my bill, but if you look at your bill, like, for instance, you have, my, my bill's ninety-two dollars for three months. I have a thing that says franchise fee for my garbage. And I have a franchise fee for my organics, because I have those two services, I've got garbage recycling is one. My twenty-gallon cart, and then I've got one for recycling, and those two now, two numbers add up to about one and a half percent, exactly one and a half percent, it's a dollar thirty-six on my bill. So that would go, now it's going to be a franchise fee of a dollar thirty-six, it would be a franchise fee of two seventy-two if you doubled it to three percent. Every three months. You pay franchise fees for other things too, you may not be aware, it's like, for instance, we have a franchise, Comcast has a franchise to operate in our right-of-way. So we collect money through a franchise fee to have some offset for the cost of letting Comcast. Dig holes in our road, for instance. So utilities often have those franchise fees, we just don't have a lot of them, and we don't think about it that way, but it says franchise fee on your bill.
Councilmember Duque.
Uh, Director Todd, I really appreciate, um, your time, and also to, um, City Manager Yamamoto, I had a bunch of these questions that I sent over, um. Uh, the last couple of days, and specifically, like Councilmember Cavalry had, about what exactly are these admin fees and? And what would it be doing, because I was very curious about if we did five percent, would this mean we'd be able to have the staff, which you just answered, you know, you, you worked well into your conversation. Um, and I also really appreciate you sharing what your. Bill is and what those percentages make sense, um, I think it's, it's one of those things that I'm, I don't know how helpful, um. I definitely, I, I definitely would support going up to three percent, um, because it just. Things are getting more expensive, your time on any of these things, I mean, we don't have built-in your time to review these contracts or, or, or that aspect, so that alone. Makes sense for that we would increase it, I guess my question for you is more, um. And, and if you could help me, uh, understand the three versus like the five percent, how, how much more helpful is it or, or not helpful is it? What does that look like?
Yeah, it, it depends, I, you know. Me personally, I think just increasing it to five, excuse me, increasing it to three would give us twice as much as we've got, and that turns into about fifty thousand dollars a year. You can't predict exactly, because people are probably going to look at their new bill and go like, oh, gosh, I'm going to go from a sixty-four down to thirty-two. And they're going to reduce their bill, but it probably goes from fifty thousand dollars a year revenue, which you was just wrapped into our miscellaneous fees, it's one of those pie. Chart slices, when Armina shows this thing. It would go from fifty to a hundred, so there's fifty thousand dollars we would use, for instance, if we went to three percent. To use towards. Whatever, it goes into the general fund, it just goes in as revenue, it doesn't go to a specific line, but I'm proposing that if we had that money, I could go. Any of us could go to, to finance and say, we've got this extra revenue that. That will fund a thing like the Civic Spark Fellow, or it would fund a consultant to work on that work, on that. That element, or when we struggle with it, do we have some staff to show up for a recycling event? It would help us out.
So is this fee tied to the contract?
In the contract. They're, they collect it for us, and then they have to remit it to us on a quarterly basis. And where it's tied in is that we set a number in the contract, and we could change it every year. When they, when you change it, it's a little bit tricky, because there's a B and O tax implication, so we're going to have to give them, we'd have to give them a certain amount of notice. Because there's a weird calculation that goes on the background, it's pennies that makes a difference in terms of how they do it, but they have to reduce their, have to add something to their rate. To do with the extra B and O tax of having collected a franchise fee.
Can you go back to the slide you had of the things that you would use the money for?
Oops, I went the wrong way, and now I probably need help, no, there we go. That slide, sir?
Yep, that's the one, I'm just trying to, the, the comp plan, I mean, that's something that will really kick in in a couple of years, it's not an immediate need for a cost, or the, the other items, things that we'd be using it for sooner rather than later?
Yes, I would suggest we do those sooner rather than later, and I would say, I would suggest that the Climate Action Plan, I would rather get started on that. Earlier rather than later. You know, follow the example of, of a, of a Maple Valley. Where you've looked at this and worked on it over a period of a couple of years, instead of saying, oh, we got to hurry up and do this in a hurry, would, then we'll end up paying some consultant to rewrite that part of our plan.
Do we have the ability to set up a separate fund so that the money comes in from this, we dedicate it, so we, rather than going into the general fund, or there's a line item, so we can allocate it to these particular uses?
I think you can, I think our accountants don't like lots and lots of extra little funds, we've had some of those over the years that we've kind of lost track of, in my, my history, I know there's some things we've. You can lose them, but. It's up to them.
I think it would be in, um, the council will have discretion on creating a fund and, and segregating this, or restricting this specifically for a specific use. We could do that. But right now, um, I don't have, I could get additional information, guidance from M R S C to see how this, um. Source of revenue could be treated or should be treated.
I think an example like that drug buy fund we all laugh about. It's not buying drugs, but it's the, it's a, that comes in as revenue and has to be kept separate, so we've got that funny little account that's kind of hard to spend in a way, because it's a small amount. But it is segregated and locked up with special rules, you could create that kind of thing. So, make sure, just so long as you make sure the rules aren't too hard to get them back out again.
Yeah, Councilmember Cavalry.
Thanks, Mayor, uh, if we look at some of these other cities that you referenced, Marysville, Muckel, Theo, Redmond, Duval, they, they all got up to eight, nine, ten percent in an awful hurry, and, and again, that's the. To me, that's the threshold of utility taxes that I always find bothersome. Um, I. Some of the things that you suggested on here, I think it's probably, I would prefer to budget it. Uh, during the course of the year, um. For these potential needs that you had, the, I'm trying to find the list here. Um, Climate Action Plan, Civics. Spark Fellow, Part-Time Recycling Education. I think we can figure out a way to budget that without creating a new tax.
Just, just to be clear, it's not a new tax, it's a tax that already exists. Any other questions on the staff report?
Um, I've got a question, Mayor.
Sorry, sorry, Mayor Pro Tem, go ahead.
Oh, no worries, um, sorry if I'm yelling at you, um. I, um, I have a question, Director Todd, I'm curious, when, um. The departments are, are getting, um, their trash picked up, are they also paying the, all the apartment buildings, are they paying this, um, fee as well?
A little bit, girl, I think so apartment buildings paying this fee, is that the question?
Yes.
Yes, so anybody who pays anything to Waste Management, if you're a restaurant or an apartment or a single-family homeowner. You pay according to whatever service you provide, remember, we've got residential rates, also that commercial rate, so you've got a twenty-yard dumpster, you're paying different than a five-yard. Roll-off container. So they would be paying, they are paying now, one and a half percent of whatever they are paying Waste Management, it's on, it's a franchise fee on all revenue. That Waste Management collects.
Okay, um. I guess for me too, like, when you look at the stuff for the comp plan for twenty twenty-nine, I do wonder, could we wait? Till later to start, but I hear what you're saying about needing to work on it. Sooner rather than later, because we're going to have to, um. I'm open to what everybody else thinks on this, because I do feel, I, I would not want to make it really high, but I do feel that. The money from this is directly going to. Impact the things that people are using, the things that need to be taken care of, for those who are used, using the, the yard waste or using the garbage collection. And so, to me, it makes sense that there would be some money to go back in to pay for those things, instead of it having to come out of the general fund from, from people that may or may not be using. Um, any trash services or, uh, and they would be impacted, maybe losing their services, because we, we need to find the money, so. Um, I guess I'm open to what others, um, feel on this one, I could see. I could see a reason to wait a little bit longer, and I can see a reason to go ahead and start, so.
Councilmembers Steckler.
Yeah, I, I am, I'm like everybody up here, I'm torn on this one too, uh. One side I look at, uh, hey, the cost for hazardous waste, I, I worked these events for, for years. One side, I look at, hey, the cost for hazardous waste. I I work these events for for years now, shredding and the recycling. We, that this is the number one thing requested. Why don't we put on a hazardous waste collection in this city? Why don't we do this? Why don't we do this? When are you guys ever gonna do it? So if we were to initiate this fee for the purpose of, you know, that one item, that one suggestion, I it sounds really good, but that doesn't mean that that's what we're gonna use it for. And then I go to the other side, and I say, this is an administrative fee. We, we're gonna charge our customers out there this this fee. It should be, what does it cost us to administer the garbage collection? That should be what this this fee should be. And these other items, I'm supportive of them. I think we just need to come up with the money for them. And at a time when we've hit our our citizens with, wow, really heavy hits on the taxes. You're gonna get, you're gonna get an increase on your garbage fee already, and then you're gonna get a increase on the administrative fee. I I I worry that this, it might be a double hit. I like all these ideas. I like, you know, I like what you're thinking. Mike, I really do. I just don't know if this is the right thing to do to increase that administrative fee to this level. I support your ideas. I support what you want to do. I I just think maybe we should find a different way to get the money for it.
We need to provide a little better direction than than what I'm hearing up here. So we need to provide more direction than what I'm hearing up here. Is there a desire to make a motion to increase it at all? Councilmember Duque, I'm sorry, I didn't see your letter.
Well, I was, so I don't have a motion yet, but I might. So hold on, because what I see, and I and I and I'm I'm looking, not that I'm not looking at Councilmember Allison right here, but I'm looking at Councilmember Cavallari and Councilmember Stuckler, because I'm really hearing what you're saying. For me, that's why the the five percent, if we were to do that, I would expect these things to happen, right? That if if I'm increasing it by that much, in in my head, this, I'm saying, these are our checklist of items, and we're gonna get it done for you. But if the question is, we need to be able to staff the already happening partnerships that we're doing, and we're not able to provide overtime. So already, we're at a deficit. So I'm not, I'm seeing the one point five percent that we're currently providing, isn't meeting our needs. It's not allowing us to to admin this. So I don't, it's so hard for me to, like, the percentages, but maybe it's two and a half percent. It's just a, you know, it's instead of, so it's a full percentage higher, and if people are not comfortable with three, because that makes sense in terms of what we've, you know, we, everything gets more and more expensive. So it makes sense that we would keep moving these things incrementally. And I wouldn't want us to wait for our ten year contract to then all of a sudden go, you know, when it's the next time around, we should have been, which seems to be a trend, I think, in Mill Creek. We should have been collecting this type of admin fee since then, but we didn't, because we didn't want to increase things. So I'm I'm cognizant about how expensive the numbers are now, and I guess if I were to make a motion, it would be just to see if people are comfortable with two and a half percent, which is less than what staff is suggesting, but we have every right to to not go with that recommendation. I I still think three makes sense. Because I think that's still going to get us to be able to get out under a deficit of the of what we're spending a staff already to manage this type of work.
How long has the fee been one and a half percent?
For the entire contract term. The seven years plus two years, we extended it. So we didn't touch it during the last contract. And so Waste Management brought this up. They said, Mike, you guys are one and a half percent, you're less than everybody else. Do you want to think about it? So I said, I will think about it, and we will bring it to you to consider it. And it, because other people have ten percent, I was amazed when I saw those numbers, like, well, that seems like a lot. So I'm with you, when that's just a lot of money, but it does, we're gonna go back one slide here. You you think about, how do you monitor, if I can go back one slide? Acknowledging the heavy vehicle impact on our roads. A couple of weeks here, you guys are gonna be talking about a million dollar contract to pave just a few roads. We do not have money coming into our road funds at the rate that we're gonna have to spend it, because we've got all these, a lot of old roads that are cracked. And so we haven't really thought about that in the past, but we've got along, we've done fine with getting our thirty, forty, fifty thousand dollars now from this franchise fee. I'm suggesting you consider moving forward. You can pick any number you want. You could pick a one and a half now and say, let's talk about it again next year and make it two. I just, as Councilmember Duque points out, I think we have a tendency to lock these up and forget about them. And so it was a good time to raise it, as we're looking at a new contract to think about it. And I don't think you really want to revisit this every year. But you may want to consider what makes sense in terms of the the costs we face, some of which are hard to monetize.
Other questions?
Mayor, I'd like to make a motion. I'm gonna make a motion that we raise the administrative fee, the administrative fee to cover increased administrative costs from one and a half to three percent.
Second.
Now we can have a discussion on it.
Is there any discussion? Would you like to speak to the motion, Councilmember?
Yeah, I would. I I thought about the two and a half. That made a lot of sense. What I what I do like is, this fee is is directly related to the administrative costs of 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 managing our our waste management. So when we get into other projects, I I'd rather see us come up with that money. I'd rather see us vote on that, or I'd rather see us have that discussion. So then I think about one and a half and the increased costs and uh, that we're gonna be seeing over the next, you know, five, seven years. And you're right, we did get in the hole, especially with sewer tax, and it it cost us. So I don't think we're gonna come back to revisiting this every year. I think we're gonna forget about it. I think three percent's gonna cover the citizens and cover the city, which is our job, to make sure that we're taking care of the citizens and the city. And I think that's gonna protect both three percent. That's why I made that motion.
Councilmember Elson.
Director Todd, could you go back to the list of things that we would be using this for?
Yes, I kind of put that was those costs, but then this is kind of new.
Yeah, right, the new stuff, I guess. Okay, so the Climate Action Plan has to be built into, it's a component of our comp plan due in twenty twenty nine?
Yes, so we're gonna have to do a mid cycle. Remember, now we're on a ten year cycle with comp plans, but we, everybody else who does in twenty twenty four is gonna have to do an extra cycle, open it up and do stuff.
Mid cycle.
Twenty twenty nine, no, no later than twenty twenty nine. We could do it sooner.
Okay.
But in twenty twenty nine, someone's gonna check to see, do you have that new element in your comp plan?
And that Civic Sparks Fellow that's part time is is your vision that's after Maple Valley's?
Yeah, Maple Valley did this last year, year before last, and we thought about doing this last year, and we just couldn't, we couldn't quite find the right student, because we were late in the cycle. But essentially, you pay them thirty one thousand dollars, and they pay the student to be an intern, handle all their training, all of their support, and it was thirty one thousand bucks. It would have been like a contracted employee, but didn't have the employment aspects to it.
Okay, and then the recycling education materials events, marketing contests, do we do that now with the fee that we're receiving?
Not really. Waste Management, for instance, comes to the Mill Creek Festival and has a, summer interns does the wheel, and let's talk about that. Many years ago, we got involved in a competition. We thought we could do well with higher recycling rates in other cities. It turns out we'd lost out to some small city that was all, essentially an HOA. We did do that a couple of years ago, probably ten years ago, and that was Gathman's time, as an opportunity. And if we could have had some money to do the social marketing, you know, put pushing it out on social media and having flyers or putting things on our website or having a contest, there's a, you know, enter this and get a chance at a hundred dollar gift certificate somewhere or other, those kinds of things are small things, but they add up. If you said, let's do a mailer to everybody to do a better job, it's gonna be six, seven thousand bucks.
Okay, and then do you know what the cost is to run a hazardous waste recycling event?
I do not.
Okay, so we don't really know if there would, by collecting an additional fee, if there would be the resources available? Or maybe it's, couldn't be done the same year you were paying for the Civic Sparks Fellow?
Yeah, what I can remember is that a long, long time ago, Councilmember Michelson was big on this, and she did a shredding event one year, and did hazardous waste the other year. And we quit doing the hazardous waste, because no longer would Snohomish County come down and set up in our parking lot to collect things. So that was kind of where it died.
Okay.
Come down and have a setup off site. You'd have to have a third party who was willing to do that or something, because it's a little harder to collect.
Yeah.
Oil and.
Paint.
You guys have looked. I've looked into it, yeah.
And it's.
It's a third party. Uh, it could be eight to twenty thousand.
Yeah, that's what I was thinking. That probably isn't going to be something we could afford by, even if we raised it up to ten percent. Then the organic law implementation, is that part of some other group of legislation that is driving us?
Seventeen ninety nine, is that the number? Is there, there are compost requirement that we have to use, any any compost we use has to come from local. We've got to still update our ordinance on that. But a lot of this is they're requiring, the idea is that food waste is adding to methane gas, et cetera. And so you'd like to capture that. And so it's gonna start off in a couple of years with particularly restaurants, but but particularly mostly commercial. If you've got this much volume of organic, then you have to, you have to have a, an organic collection. Right now, most restaurants don't have to have that organics collection. And then it's gonna ramp up to being, if it's a percentage of your waste, and then it turns into an absolute amount, and then it's gonna ramp up into where it gets to apartment houses, too. So it is in over years, depending on the size of city we are and the amount we collect.
Yeah, so so with that being a legislative situation, that becomes the city's responsibility and not the provider's responsibility?
No, it's, it's Waste Management's providers' responsibility, but I can just picture the phone calls. Instead of me getting one call every couple of weeks about something about Waste Management, I can picture a whole boatload of phone calls and a lot of staff time to explain this and help implement it. It just, it's gonna take feet on the street with our citizens. And I think that's the service we would provide by having this franchise fee, is that we're gonna do a better job of helping our citizens understand this change than it might be if just Waste Management sends something as an insert. I don't know how many of you can still get paper bills, but the paper, the bill insert doesn't work anymore. Because a lot of you get them online, and do you even look at them? Do you even know what your franchise fee is? Because you got it on autopay. I'm not being accusatory, but the answer is, a lot of people don't do that. So you can't shove something in the bill, like your P S E bill's got something every month that says, we're doing something good for the environment, or you, there's gonna be a change. We missed that opportunity. So I can see that's where it's gonna be hard for them, because they don't have those bills coming out there every month. But I think we're gonna have to play a part in that through social media, through our website, through events. And so I think there's gonna be costs on staff to make that happen smoothly on behalf of our citizens.
Okay, thanks for that added information.
Councilmember Stuckler.
And in all fairness, too, to Director Todd, I mean, these are suggestions that he had when he came to us with a three to five percent projected increase. So we're coming back at my my rec- my recommendation or motion of three percent, because I I know that will cover the administrative fees. If there's a little bit extra, then we can look at some of these. But we're really focused on making sure we're administering the 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 waste management properly. And like I said on these other ones, I'd love him to come back and let's see if we can appropriate funds for some of these other projects and some of these other, they're great ideas. I totally, totally agree with them. Especially hazardous waste.
Other discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor of the motion, please say aye.
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 Any opposed?
No.
Uh, any abstentions? If I heard correctly, the motion passes five to one, hearing correctly. Okay. Thank you, Director Todd.
Thank you. Thanks, Mike.
Moving on to our new business grant, did you want me to introduce item A? All right, okay. So last week, we approved a motion directing the city attorney to prepare a resolution awarding the city manager a merit award. That form of resolution was in your pack. So if there's any questions, you can have city attorneys prepared to answer them. If not, we can entertain a motion.
Mayor, I'd like to make motion.
Okay.
Motion to authorize a payment of the merit award for the city manager. The amount's not on here. I think it was five percent of his salary, correct?
Councilmember Cavallari, it's in section one of the proposed resolution.
Okay, I found it. Thank you. Like to rephrase, if I may. Pursuant to section five point three of the contract number twenty twenty two dash sixteen eighty two, the city council authorizes a one time merit award in the amount of ten thousand one hundred ninety eight dollars and eighty cents to city manager Martin Yamamoto for performance of twenty twenty three. The merit shall be paid in full in March of twenty twenty four.
Second.
Is there any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, any abstentions? Motion passes six to zero. Okay, where are we? Item B, Deputy City Manager.
All right, good evening, council. Today, I'm coming and asking for a lot of money. So our first project today is for Public Works. We're looking at five different trucks. Two of them currently have seal issues and are inoperable, over twenty years old. One of them is over twenty years old with a blown head gasket. And then I have one that is over fifteen years old that is at its end of life. And then we have one last vehicle that we're looking at moving from an admin vehicle into our engineering, into our main general pool of vehicles for the city, so that your different engineering staff or community development or marketing and communications, recreation, any of them can use that. So like, when we go to events, we would have a truck to be able to pull the trailer. We wouldn't have to go ask Public Works to use one of their vehicles. So at this point in time, earlier this year, council approved the city manager the ability to use Enterprise Fleet Maintenance to help staff with vehicle purchasing at government prices through the Sourcewell I L A that we currently were using. So at the, Enterprise is gonna help us maintain a newer, safer fleet, while also getting better returns on the vehicles. So on the first vehicle, it was cost out at fifty six thousand six hundred twenty dollars and fifty cents. We also have one at sixty one thousand eight hundred and eight dollars and ten cents, and then one more at ninety one thousand six hundred sixty five dollars and ten cents. So the total cost would be three hundred twenty three thousand three hundred thirty four dollars and seventy cents. Staff is asking that we add a five percent contingency, just for anything, you know, dealer charges, or if the vehicles that we go to get end up being more expensive, if there's a tax difference, that will give us a bit of a cushion, so that we don't have to come back and ask you for more. So at this point in time, the maximum amount we're looking at would be three hundred thirty nine thousand five hundred and one dollars and forty four cents. So we'd be looking at upfront costs in this year of fourteen thousand nine hundred twelve dollars and fifty cents. And that's gonna include half of the cost of all the upfitting of the vehicle, so the headache racks, any kind of lights that are needed, any extra equipment that goes on the vehicle. And then it's gonna include licensing registrations, taxes, and different fees. At this point in time, we will need a budget amendment. We do have the funding in five oh nine to support these purchases. We just did not budget it. And then we would expect the payments for these vehicles to continue to come out of the five oh nine equipment reserve funding. And then I do have the lease packet, the quote, if we want to go through that. At this point in time, the interest rate would be, if we were to lease, it would be the three year treasury bill, which is at four point four eight percent right now, plus three hundred and fifty basis points, so that puts us around eight percent. So we are considering a five year lease for these vehicles, and then depending on what Enterprise recommends, we may be selling them in a year or two. We are required to keep them six months, because we do get that government pricing. Does anyone have any questions? And would you like to go through the lease paperwork?
Can you just refresh my memory on that Enterprise piece now? Do do they, if they say six months from now or a year from now, we want to sell the vehicle, you have to buy a new one. We're locked into that, correct?
We do not have to do anything we don't want to. So we can take their recommendation, or we can say, no, we don't really want to do that right now. We can pay it all, so if we end up leasing. Um, we can pay it all. So if we end up leasing it and we say, you know, we think we're just going to purchase it outright and we're, we're done. We can purchase the vehicle, no uh, penalty fee and it's ours.
Thank you.
Other questions? Councilmember Duque?
I under, uh, thank you very much. Um, uh, I do not need to go through the lease. Thank you. I don't know if anyone else had answered that question, but happy to um, uh, go through it if that's what people would like. Um, my question is, even though I know that there's funding or we have um, aligned on for it, because we deferred in so many of the purchases of vehicles for Public Works, and I think maybe for the police one you mentioned because of um, chain supply issues, why, why or could we do part of it through our, um, ARPA funding?
We really could purchase them all through our funding if that's what we wanted to do.
Okay.
Or part of them, if you wanted to do fifty percent or twenty-five percent, it's totally up to you.
Is that a decision we would have to make today?
Not necessarily. Um, we only have to pay for the vehicles on delivery. So we would have time if you wanted uh, us to come back with a resolution for that.
Okay, thank you.
Councilmember Stekler?
I, I was going through this, I had two questions. Uh, you, you mentioned one vehicle was ninety-one thousand, is that correct?
Yes.
Which vehicle was that?
That would be the F three fifty. So that's going to be a heavier duty. I believe that one will help more with uh, snow, snow plowing and all of the heavier equipment.
That we attach to it.
Yeah, so it's, it's got a, it can pull more.
Got it.
Kind of thing.
And then, uh, the other question, I'm not an expert in this, so I'm excuse my ignorance, but the eight percent seems high to me. Um, why would we pay such a high rate?
Because that is the going rate and that is what Sourcewell has approved.
Yeah.
So that, yeah, so if you go buy a vehicle, it is going to be around eight percent right now. And it is going to be the treasury bill rate plus three hundred and fifty basis points whenever we purchase. So if it ends up going down between now and when we make the final purchase, that interest rate could change.
So when I see the Fed rate at five, six percent, that, that has nothing to do with it. The eight percent is the going rate.
It, it's the treasury bill.
Yeah.
So your um, three-year treasury bill plus three hundred and fifty basis points. I will point out that while we, when we do not pay all of this money upfront, that money does stay in our LGIP pool. It is making five and a half percent. So that is
That's a big point.
A bit of an offset and it is a, a bonus, I would say.
That could be quite a bit of money. Okay. Thank you.
Councilmember Cavalieri?
Thank you, mayor. How much of the ARPA funds do we have left?
I want to say it's around one point seven or one point eight million.
Yeah, I think uh, Councilmember Duque's point about potentially using ARPA is probably a, a prudent decision at this point, especially since it's time sensitive.
Other questions?
Um, I agree. I'm interested in seeing about using some ARPA funds because we need to spend that money and we need the vehicles. So to me, it's a perfect expense. Um, I'm also curious on some things on what the cost, um, I'd be interested in the analysis of how much money. I guess it's, it goes back to the cost basis of money, right? Cause the value of the money, because if we're, if we're um, buying the vehicles of this program and we're paying, but we're getting back a percentage, the five percent, all the money that we aren't dishing out, do we end up making money in the end as opposed to just paying for it upfront? And so I'd be curious what that analysis breakdown is.
So with the public works vehicles, we did end up in the black. Or uh, if we were to sell at certain times, and I mean, I'm not going to say that we're going to make money for, you know, using a lease that's at eight percent and getting five and a half percent. But because of the price of the vehicles, we do get it at a discounted price. And then when we turn around and sell it, we do get, you know, a standard price. It's not government sales prices. Um, we very likely could make money. It just depends on the car market.
Right, okay, but um, the, I am definitely in favor of using some of the ARPA, at least a percentage of the, of it with the ARPA funds. Cause I think it would be a good, um, a good use of the ARPA funds and is right in line with what to me, ARPA funds are meant for and, um, and we need to spend that money too. So it fits many buckets for me.
Councilmember Allison?
Thank you, mayor. Um, so yeah, when, when you look at, um, you know, the one example of the truck that's twenty years old and it has broken seals, you know, this potentially could be a vehicle that we could buy and keep for much longer than the buyout on the lease situation. So I, I would be interested in knowing um, kind of that cost basis, the, the value of the money versus the lease. So um, I, I, I'm in support of replacing the vehicles, but maybe using some ARPA funds for one or more of those uh, vehicles that get lighter use and we keep them longer.
Ca- Councilmember Todd, I'm sorry, Director Todd?
I'm not, that, we got into this looking at at least partly because the lead time and the ability to buy vehicles through the state contract was essentially impossible. So we've been at this for what, nine months or more, talking about this. So that's one of the advantages of the enterprise leases that they've got the buying power of buying a lot of vehicles. So the prospect of getting vehicles in a couple of months is attractive to us. We also potentially benefit from them managing vehicles through their maintenance program than, rather than us managing them because we don't have a big enough shop to manage them. So those are other factors that do weigh into this. I, I'm with you as well. I mean, I struggle personally with lease versus buy, but this particular lease is not a traditional lease like you would lease a car yourself. It has this advantage of being able to turn them over and have them help manage that, um, manage and expedite that acquisition product, uh, process. So I'm concerned about, let's hurry up and spend some ARPA money and we may not get, have, get a window to buy these trucks for six months or nine months. It may turn out longer, but, but Laurel and Keegan probably know more about that. Thanks.
If we have authorization to purchase them, um, through, through tonight, um, we can always come back and then say the purchases that we made will be, uh, will use ARPA funding to cover. And so then we'll just do a journal entry and move them.
Can you clarify with enterprise, do we lease, have, we have, when you say purchase, we wouldn't be purchasing through enterprise. We'd be paying cash upfront, using the ARPA funds to buy them directly through this uh, program as opposed to leasing them through enterprise?
Yes, so if we used ARPA funding for cash upfront, we, energy, enterprise would just be helping us with the maintenance.
And but
So there would be no lease involved.
Right, so, but if we lease them, the rate is eight percent, but our effective rate may be substantially lower than that because we're only making monthly payments. So our effective rate would only be about three and a half percent and we'd still have the money in the bank in the ARPA funds to use for other purposes.
That is correct.
So I think that's, I mean, tonight, I think we just need to deal with, do we agree we need the vehicles and then let's come back in the next few months and talk about what's the best way to fund them? I'm, I'm not necessarily on board with buying them because I think there's a big opportunity cost with the, the effective interest rate we pay on a lease is pretty dang low. And going to go down if the Fed rate starts dropping later this year like they're projecting it is going to be. So I'd say we defer the decision on funding for another night. Uh, Councilmember Stekler?
That was right in line with what I was going to suggest is that the ARPA funds stay in the investment pool making money. Uh, whereas our cash stays in the investment pool making money with this lease. I assume that we have the ability, should we decide to, you know, we enter into the lease, then we decide to go ahead and just pay for them. We, we can do that.
Yes.
So I, I, uh, I agree with you. My, my feeling is I would rather not worry tonight about the allocation of where the funds are coming from. I do like the lease program. We spent a, we spent a long time explaining to us why that was so valuable and the maintenance and all the other elements. So I'm supportive of the lease program and you really sold me when I realized that eight percent I didn't like, but then the money that's staying in the fund making five. Yeah, we're talking about a, a very attractive use of my, our money here. So I, I would support going for the vehicles. I would support going with the lease. And then let's revisit the ARPA allocation. When you decide what, what is the best way for us to spend that remaining money? It might be to pay off these vehicles. It may not be, there may be something else that would be a better spend. But now we have a little back pocket idea of if we get to that window of opportunities closing, we could always pay off our vehicles. That's, that's, that's something we've always got waiting for us. We could pay off our vehicles and that would take care of some, the remaining ARPA funds. Cause I know you've got some other ideas for the remaining funds. So again, I support purchasing the vehicles. I support the, the lease program. And let's not get into how we would use the funds tonight. It's my recommendation.
Councilmember Cavalieri?
Uh, thanks, Mary. And I was just going to kind of ditto what everybody else was saying. I know the, it's not a surprise that these vehicles need replacing. We all knew it was coming, so blown seals or head gaskets don't get better, so they, they're out of service. So the sooner you can get vehicles, uh, however you guys need to do it, I say go forth and conquer. Thanks.
If there's no other questions, do we have any motions?
Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to approve a resolution authorizing the city manager to execute purchase orders uh, and contract with enterprise fleet management for acquisition of three twenty twenty-four Ford F two fifty XL vehicles and one twenty twenty-four F two fifty X L T four by four vehicle and one twenty twenty-four Ford F three fifty S D four by four vehicle with the total cost of the five vehicles not to exceed three hundred and thirty-nine thousand, five hundred and one dollars, forty-four cents, inclusive of all taxes, fees, delivery, vehicle preparation, registration and floor mats. No, I just threw that in.
You gotta say that real fast.
Take a breath. Is there a second?
Second.
Any further, any discussion on the motion? Hearing none, all those in favor of the motion, please say aye.
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 Any opposed? Any abstentions? Motion passes unanimously, it's a six to zero. Now let's talk police vehicles.
All right, so my next request is going to be a little bit over half a million dollars. Um, we are looking at seven new police vehicles. Um, we currently have eight vehicles that are over five years old. Um, I gave a bit of a summary that we'll go through here in a minute on the different vehicles and uh, what kind of uh, maintenance costs that they've had, uh, in their ages. So the city has had a lot of difficulty, um, ordering new police vehicles because the orders have either been dropped or postponed. Um, we've had a lot of supply chain issues with COVID. Um, our purchasing power wasn't that great because we only bought one or two vehicles every now and then. Um, so we are trying to catch back up. Um, so these vehicles will not be here until twenty twenty-five. So we are looking to create a fleet that's going to match. Um, right now we've kind of got a mismatch, um, because we just got what, what we could find. Uh, because we had vehicles breaking down and we just, we needed a running vehicle. Um, at this point in time, we would like to set up a fleet that we can start, um, reusing some of the up fittings so that you can take it out of one vehicle and put it in the next. Um, so there will be more savings potentially on these upfitting costs later on. Um, so the first vehicle that um, the police would like to replace is going to be a two thousand nine Dodge Avenger. Um, in late February, it had sixty-seven thousand miles. Um, so this was a vehicle that was purchased for the detectives, but it does not have the space that they need to carry everything for the crime scene. Um, I know when I saw it, I was like sixty-seven thousand miles is not that many. Um, they are using this vehicle to go to Burien every day for our, um, new recruits now. So because this was not a great vehicle for the detective unit, they ended up using, I believe it was a truck or an SUV. Um, I'm not sure which one it was. It was one of those two.
Yeah, we've had some movement in the fleet, so actually the Avenger right now is currently being utilized by our deputy director. Um, and so he's, he's utilizing that as an admin vehicle. Um, the issue with that vehicle is, is like the deputy city manager said, it really doesn't serve the purpose for investigations. Uh, the cargo area is very limited and therefore putting things like awnings and, and tables to process evidence and processing equipment, scene lighting, uh, camera equipment. To put that into a Dodge Avenger is difficult to say the least. So that's why we're really looking for the replacement of that said vehicle.
Thank you. Um, then we have car thirty-three that was a two thousand eleven Chevy Tahoe. We have around a hundred and thirty-six thousand miles on it and we have spent ex, eh, over forty-two thousand dollars in maintenance costs. Uh, we have a car thirty-eight, twenty thirteen Ford Interceptor with around seventy-five thousand miles and we are having transmission issues. Um, we've replaced the turbo twice and so we've had maintenance costs of around twenty-six thousand. Uh, we've had a two thousand fifteen Ford utility SUV with a hundred and twenty-two thousand miles. Again, we've had to replace the turbos. We have found that the majority of these vehicles, I know we've had issues with our hybrids. We've had a lot of issues with the turbos, um, so I believe they're trying to get away from those. Um, we have a twenty sixteen Ford SUV that is a K nine backup. It is just under a hundred thousand miles. We've spent around twenty-six thousand in maintenance. We have a twenty sixteen Ford utility SUV with eighty-six thousand miles. We have coil issues and again around twenty-six thousand in maintenance. And then the last one is a twenty twenty Ford utility hybrid SUV. Um, so we've been having a lot of issues with the hybrid systems. Um, we, the vehicle has been in the shop for over six months at the dealership because of the hybrid issues. Um, and then it actually, I think it just went in again for the same hybrid issues. And so we are looking to not have that lemon be an issue going forward. Um, so at this point in time, enterprise is estimating that each vehicle will be seventy-three thousand, sixty-one dollars and seventy-six cents. Um, we would like to add a little bit of contingency, um, at seventy-five thousand per vehicle, just in case. And then that will put our total cost at five hundred twenty-five thousand dollars. And so upfront costs on these vehicles is going to be just under ninety-one thousand. So that's going to be all of the upfitting. That's going to be the lights on the top, the cages, all of the graphics. Um, and any equipment they need.
But none of those costs would be incurred till twenty-five when we take delivery?
Correct. Yeah, so that'll happen once we get the vehicles and then we pay half of the upfitting costs upfront. And then we are estimating that that will be nine thousand, two hundred eighty-nine dollars and twenty-one dollar, or I'm sorry, and twenty-one cents a month. Um, we would expect to get these vehicles in early to mid twenty twenty-five. And then these vehicles will impact the twenty-five, twenty-six budget.
I think with the repair numbers, you made the case for leasing. Chief White, did you have a comment you wanted to make?
No, just to add regarding the hybrid vehicles, uh, we actually have an issue with a hybrid vehicle in its transmission right now. As well as, uh, an issue with the batteries and how they function under idle. As you know, police vehicles tend to idle for extreme hours. Um, and that has caused some stress on the batteries and how that system works. It might be optimum for another, uh, maybe just for routine city driving for administration or whoever might else be using a vehicle for the city. But as far as police vehicles, it's, it really hasn't worked out as much as well as we had hoped it to do.
Yeah, I don't think I touched, um, on, so we typically, the goal was to replace the police vehicles every four to five years. And that is even though your mileage may be lower, you still have a lot more idling time. And then your vehicles that are parked have, you know, if you're watching traffic, you go from zero to sixty near immediately. So that's really hard on the vehicles. So sometimes the mileage can be a bit deceiving because the wear and tear on the vehicles because of how they're being used.
They're hard miles.
Yes.
Councilmember Cavalieri?
Thanks, mayor. And, and another, again, we've known that we were going to get these vehicles at some point. And, and the other thing we sometimes forget in this city is that our guys don't have take-home cars, meaning that they don't sit in a driveway for twelve hours. These are constantly in use. So, uh, if it seems that the shelf life is a little shorter or not as long or or maybe they don't, we're not getting our money's worth, that's not true. They're just, uh, they're just in constant use. And so therefore the, the level of use and the mileage and all that that goes with it is, is always going to be significantly less. Yes, chief, you had a question?
If I could also add though, I'd like to echo, uh, Director Todd's comments regarding the maintenance. Right now I have a detective who's also assigned to fleet maintenance. And so her time is also used to maintain these vehicles and bringing enterprise fleet onboard um, and their maintenance package that comes with these lease programs is going to reduce her time that she is spending doing fleet maintenance. And where she's now going to be able to direct her time to the job that she's been asked to do for the city. So just wanted to add that as well.
Any further questions for staff?
I do.
Councilmember Stekler?
Just a couple of quick questions. I, I noticed on the, uh, first set of vehicles, the, the Just a couple of quick questions. I, I noticed on the uh first set of vehicles, the, the invoice versus MSRP was like significant reduction, like ten percent. But these do not have that kind of reduction from MSRP. Uh, they're actually pretty close. So they're not able to get the same type of discounts?
They usually get five to twenty five percent. And I will say, they, they did let us know that they estimated these high, just in case. Um, right now, getting police vehicles is really, really difficult. Um, so I think that's likely why their difference, the savings difference is not as large. Um, so we may also see a little bit more savings after we've purchased them.
Yeah.
Or once we've secured them.
Okay, cuz that, that, that is, this, the ones I'm looking at here are like fifty one versus fifty. So it's basically no, no, don't do discount at all. And the other thing that I had a, a question on, and it might be just this uh, the interceptor that I'm looking at here. Um, are we, are we purchasing any more hybrid vehicles? Are we gonna continue to? So when this one says standard engine, three eighteen V six hybrid, you're not, even though it's listed there, you're not going to order that? Is it, the, the interceptors I'm looking at here on, on your page fifty of seventy eight? I actually guess go back, go back to where the uh, it's on um page six of nine from uh Enterprise? Police interceptor utility all ba- all wheelbase?
I think that they listed the options that were there.
Um, if you look at page.
Those are not the options that are on the vehicle you're purchasing. Not on this vehicle. This is just everything that's available.
Those are the packages that are available, I believe.
If you look at page six of nine in the quote, um, at the top of the page, it says twenty twenty five Ford Police Interceptor Utility Base, All Wheel Drive, U S. Um, I believe it would say hybrid there.
Oh, that's fine. Hey, so we are not purchasing any more hybrids at all. Okay, that's just a.
That is not the intent.
Just a confusion there on that.
Chief, did you have another comment you wanted to make?
Um, I did. Um, and that was that in, it is truly a supply and demand issue when it comes to these police vehicles. Um, they, they had actually stopped building Ford, it stopped building the police vehicle for quite some time. Um, they are the most uh cost effective model right now on the market. And um, one to, to your comment, uh, council member Stekler about the, the cost, yeah, you know, we, we ran into a hiccup with our K nine vehicle. Um, and we're actually, we're charged additional funding because of the demand on the police vehicles. We had purchased it at our rate. Um, and before shipment, before delivery, they said they actually increased the cost on us, if you recall. And so, yeah, we, that's one of the issues that we've been facing. It's a really big supply and demand issue, and that's what's driving the cost.
Any other questions?
Yeah, I'll go ahead and make a motion.
Please.
Authorize the city manager uh to execute a purchase order and contract with Enterprise Fleet Management for acquisition of seven Ford Police Interceptor vehicles in an amount not to exceed five hundred and twenty five thousand, inclusive of all taxes, fees, delivery, vehicle preparation, and subject to the city attorney approval for final contract terms and conditions.
Second.
Is there any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Motion passes six to zero. You're on a roll.
All right, so the next one I have tonight is an ordinance that would clarify and amend contract requirements in our two ARPA ordinances, twenty twenty three eight ninety and twenty twenty three eight ninety two. So these were the two ordinances that gave the list of projects, the twenty five projects that have been approved. Um, so at that time, we were not very specific with what contracts council wanted us to bring back to them. Um, so we just said any contract um needed to be brought back to council. So because we weren't specific in the size of the contract, we're running into a lot of purchasing issues and um, sometimes we're just not even making the purchase with ARPA because uh, you know, like a two hundred dollar warranty uh or antivirus contract isn't something we want to bring to council, even though you approved the project. Um, or if we got a contract with someone to create the different banners, but because we're, you know, we, they're gonna be making something for us. They want a short contract and maybe it was like five thousand dollars. That would be something we would have to bring back to council to use ARPA funding for. So we are just wanting to clarify um the language because we don't feel that that was council's intent. Uh, so we're looking to change it to um tie in with the city's current purchasing policy and have any contracts over fifty thousand come to council. And again, any of these projects um that we feel that council would want any kind of input on, we will still be bringing back.
Questions?
No, I think that's par for the course. I'd like to make a motion.
Councilmember Allison has a.
Okay, sorry.
This only applies to projects that we've already approved.
Correct.
Well, the intent is it applies to contracts already approved and ARPA contracts going forward. What they're asking is for us to confirm that for projects we've approved, if the contract is less than fifty thousand dollars, they don't have to bring it to us for our policy.
Correct. Yeah, so that'll save staff a lot of time so that we're not making agenda summaries, reviewing the contract to make sure that it's all set for council, going to the city attorney to make a resolution. So it'll really help us expedite these ARPA projects.
Councilmember UK?
You know, I don't mind, I, I, I'm totally in agreement of this, but I don't mind if during reports, if there's opportunities to share, these are the things we've done so far with ARPA that you, you, that you didn't know were part of this bundle. Cuz I love that transparency of finding out that like this caused this. So doesn't need to be, I don't want you, I don't want anyone to make a presentation for an antivirus like software. But I would love to know in a report of whoever, staff member, that these are the things that we've done with it. Cuz then it feels like, oh, we are moving forward instead of we haven't heard anything in a while.
We can definitely do that.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Any motions?
About a motion to approve an ordinance amending ordinances, twenty twenty three dash eight nine zero and twenty twenty three dash eight nine two, clarifying that our projects above fifty thousand are subject to additional council approval.
Second.
Is there any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Motion passes uh six to zero. Thank you.
Thank you for your time, Mayor.
City engineer. We're talking stormwater.
Oh, hi, I'm here. Good evening, Mayor, Council. Um, as part of being an engineer, is training young engineers in how to be sure of themselves and their designs. So I would like to introduce Miriam Saltani. She is the project manager for the Great Sea Storm Water Pipe Rehabilitation Project. And we just recently did the bid opening for that, and she would like to get uh your approval for the contract. So, Miriam.
Welcome. Welcome to the podium.
Thank you, City Engineer. Hello, everyone. Um, uh, council members, mayor. Um, I'm Miriam Saltani, project engineer, and I'm here to present uh my project that recently went to bid. So this project called uh twenty twenty two, twenty twenty three Great Sea Storm Pipe Rehabilitation Project. This project is part of the Surface Water Aging Infrastructure Program. And I'm here to propose the awarding the construction contract. Um, here's a bit about the summary of what we're going to talk about. Uh, first, we're going to talk about a overview of the Surface Water Aging Infrastructure Program. Then I'm going to talk about twenty twenty two, twenty twenty three Great Sea Storm Pipe Rehabilitation Project, the like particular project, how it looked like. Then a little bit about um the bid opening and the summary and the result of that. And after, I'm going to talk about the funding and the expenses that we have for this project, then questions and proposed motion. Surface Water Aging Infrastructure Program, this program, city, we had this project since twenty eighteen. And this program was to first CCTV and just video cameraing the existing storm pipes that we already have and grade them. So the grading was like we had F, C, and A. F for the pipes that were close to fail and needed immediate repairment. C was for uh the pipes that can be repaired in the like next decade. And then A, the pipes that doesn't need any like touch. So for um, you can see these two pictures are some examples. So bottom left, um, you can see these pipes is, was close to failing. And then bottom right, you can see this pipe that looked like it was okay, but then on the bottom right of that pipe, you could see some deterioration. So these kind of pipes needed repairment. Uh, during this program, so first in twenty nineteen for the greater pipes, we addressed this issue and repaired those pipes, those type of pipes between um, and the plan was between twenty twenty to twenty twenty seven to repair all those great C pipes. Um, and the repairment was not to replace any of those pipes, great C pipes, just to uh keep those pipes, but just repair them, repair inside of those pipes. So that was the plan. And then between twenty two, twenty twenty to twenty twenty two, we repaired four thousand nine hundred thirty linear feet of the pipes and then fifty one sectional uh patching has happened. So this um, STIPL are like just patching those locations that needed more repairment. So here you can see um images of how this repairment happens. They kinda, they don't touch the ground, they don't uh do any excavation, they just open the lid of the manhole, insert all of these materials inside the pipe and then like do their UV to make sure that they cure. And that's it. So you can see the bottom two pa- pictures on the left is the pipe that hasn't been like like received repairment and the right, the pipe that has received it. So this, this, all of this were um explanation of all these programs that we had. And now I'm gonna talk about this product, particular project that we have. So first, the name is twenty twenty two, twenty twenty three is kind of confusing. But the reason was that the design was supposed to happen twenty twenty two and then construction twenty twenty three. But then this has, the design has been delayed, so design happened twenty twenty three and twenty twenty four, the construction will happen. But we kept the name. So this project has one thousand four hundred fifty six linear fit. That means that are going to be uh received cure, uh cured in place pipe. And then there will have nine sectional locations and then plus all of those, we have like seven thousand five hundred thirty three CCTV, which is located in Mill Creek Boulevard, Siberia. This project, uh, the advertisement happened on February nine, twenty twenty four. And you can see here the locations of all these pipe that uh we're going to repair. On February twenty nine, twenty twenty four, we opened the bids and we received three bids. So uh between these three, Allied Trenchless uh was really close uh to the engineers estimate and was the lowest responsive bid. Um, we already worked with Allied Trenchless on the other Great Sea Programs, Projects, and they're really familiar with city streets and everything. Uh, so regarding the funding, the funding source we have in the CIP, we have a funding source for this project and the project that for the Great Sea after this one that we're anticipating to go to design and everything again. We have the budget and for the expensive, expensive we are going to do uh for the design contract, we already paid them. Uh, and then for the construction contract, uh, we are going to estimate the amount that Allied Trenchless gave us. So we have ten percent contingency and fifteen percent um for the construction support and inspection. And uh the total is within the budget. Thank you for the opportunity. Um, just let me know if you have any questions.
Nicely done. Any questions? Say no questions. Do we have any motions?
Guess I'm up again. Uh, authorizing the city manager to accept Allied Plumbing Pumps LLC, Allied Trenchless as the responsible bidder, providing the lowest responsive bid for the construction of the twenty two, twenty three Great Sea Storm Pipe Rehabilitation Project and authorizing the city manager to execute the approved contract.
Thank you.
Second.
Is there any discussion? Uh, if there's no discussion, all those in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye. Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Motion passes unanimously. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you.
Okay, we have no proposed new initiatives, no study session, no consent agenda this evening. It brings us to a report, city manager.
Thank you, Mayor. I have uh two reports. As you recall, last year, uh, well, every year, uh, King County, uh, sorry, Snoke County Council holds an in district meeting and they schedule it at a venue um of their choice across somewhere within the county. And uh, our council member, Jared Mead, um, King, uh, Snoke County Councilmember. So, Snoke County Councilmember Jared Mead selected uh Mill Creek Chamber again uh on March nineteenth to hold their in district meeting. So just wanted to let you know that uh that's being held in our third week here on Tuesday, the nineteenth. Uh, the second report is I did have an opportunity to meet with city manager Carl Lindsay over at Kenmore. Uh, he gave me a preview of, of their town square, which uh kind of preview of what will be to bring. Um, and you'll be viewing on April eleventh and your city tours as we work with the nineteen sixty one consulting. So um, it was a good, good meeting with him, just to get an opportunity to, to catch up and, and then discuss the, all the projects that Kenmore is working on and um, in the recent past. And so, and that's all my, my reports, Mayor. Thanks.
Chief, did you have a report?
Thank you, Mayor. I do. Uh, first, I would like to uh publicly offer my sincere condolences to the Washington State Patrol um for the loss of Trooper Gadd. And let, let the council know that we are, as Mill Creek Police Department, are doing everything we can to assist them through this process. Um, secondly, I have a staffing update. Um, we are fortunate to have the last two vacancies of the Mill Creek Police Department commissions positions. Uh, those are, have been spoken for. Um, we have two candidates that are in the process of their final testing phases. Um, one has one uh last test to accomplish and the other has two. So we're very happy to have that process continuing. And also, um, on our civilian staff members, uh, we accepted a, uh, actually, we didn't accept, but we offered a letter, uh, to, uh, an employment letter to a candidate who accepted. And she will be starting on the eighteenth of this month. So we're very uh excited to be working on that staffing issue that we've been having. And uh, training is going along with the uh smoothly with our other civilian uh record specialist that was hired as well. So um, we're really fortunate and things seem to be going along the right path and we hope to be up to full staffing shortly.
Any other staff reports?
Other staff reports.
Thank you. Okay, uh, I just got three relatively quick things. Um, first is the Department of Commerce, as you may or may not know, they adopt what they call their procedural rules guiding local jurisdictions, implementation of comprehensive plans and development regulations under the Growth Management Act. Over the last couple of years, there's been a whole bunch of new legislation that they are now starting a process to look at updating the procedural guidelines in light of that new legislation. So um, I assume Director Todd got a copy of that email, but they're having a couple of listening sessions, uh, one on the nineteenth of March and one on April first. It's kind of their kickoff to that rulemaking process. It's kind of their kickoff to that rulemaking process. So I, for my day job, I'll be listening to it, but I'll have my ears for my city job as well when I listen to it. Uh second thing is, uh in our off week next week, Mayor Pro Tem and I will be having a city chat at the Mill Creek Community Association. And the third thing is, our agenda should be relatively light next week because council members Duque and Cavalieri will be enjoying vacation outside of the city. So we'll only have five of us next week, so we're planning a light agenda accordingly. Uh Mayor Pro Tem, anything, any report tonight?
Helps to find me. Thank you, mayor. Um I actually have a couple of things. Um first, I'd like to start with, um I wasn't here last week because I was sick. Um and I believe um that you all spoke about Will Nelson. And so I want to just take a moment um and and just um acknowledge his passing. And that, you know, ever since I've been on council, Will, Will's always, he's always been here since the day I first was, was appointed. He came, came out and talked to me and introduced himself and got to know me and um he, he's just always here and um he's gonna be greatly missed. And I know um I didn't always agree with him on everything, but he always had some really interesting things to make me think about. And he was very dedicated and he served his country. And um I, I'm just um, I'm personally gonna miss seeing him on here every week. So I just want to acknowledge that um tonight. And um also, I'd like to also send my um acknowledge this, the state trooper who, who lost his life this week as well. Um my condolences to, to his family. Um I, I just want to touch base a little bit on the legislative agenda. We will come back and we will give you a full, a more conclusive report once um in a few weeks because the session is gonna end this week. But I just wanted to give you a couple highlights of things happening because um the um police pursuit reform bill, the initiative twenty one thirteen, managed to make it through both um the House and Senate. So I think um that's really good news for us and it's something that we were pushing for as a city. And so it's nice to see something happen with that. Also, I just want to acknowledge that um we were working, we have been working on some changes for House Bill twenty sixty one because we weren't happy with that and that has died so this session, once again, just like last year. So um it will um not be going through this year, but it will definitely be back again next year for a third round in some form. It will be resurrected, so we'll need to stay on top of that as a city. And um just wanted to also throw out here that um it looks like possibly we are gonna get some train, some um funding for the Snohomish Training Center. I need to delve into that a little bit more, but I saw something in the paper that they were looking at putting one uh one of the new um training centers for the police officers in Snohomish County. So I hope that comes to pass and that that will help us out as well. And um that's all I had to report. Thank you, mayor.
Councilor Cavalieri?
Thanks, mayor. Uh thanks, Mayor Pro Tem, for that update. I was gonna speak a little bit about police pursuits. Just really quick, it was brought to the floor through the initiative process. So once it passed the House and Senate, it's no longer um at jeopardy of a governor veto. So um it is law at this point, or will be law at this, from this point forward. Second, my condolences to the family of the trooper as well. Um I think we sometimes forget how dangerous this work is that, that those guys do and we are deeply in their debt. And lastly, um we kicked off today's meeting uh with a, with a merit award as first part of the agenda for the city manager. And uh council spoke at length um during our meetings in our review of the city manager's performance. And, and what exists is uh, is that is the mechanism that exists is an opportunity to give a merit award. And we haven't done one of those in quite some time. And how um brought me a lot of joy, I think, very many, all of my council members, a lot of joy to be able to reflect um what a good steward you've been of the taxpayers' uh time and monies and, and its employees and its, and its partners and the community. And, and it's um, it's, it's shown as we've taken those next steps as a city uh to the future. And uh I only wish it could be more, but that's what the contract says. So fantastic job, Martin Yamamoto, you are appreciated and um glad to have you back. Thank you.
Councilor Steckler?
Those are wonderful words. I, I echo those as well, city manager. You have incredible job you've done for the city. I don't have a report, but I, I didn't want to make that comment as well. Thank you.
Councilor Allison, any report?
No report tonight, thank you.
Councilmember Duque?
No report.
Audience Communication, Ms. Idol, name and city of residence, if you'd like to identify it.
Barb Idol, Mill Creek, Washington. Thank you, mayor. First off, first I'd like to say thank you to the deputy city manager. I could hear you wonderfully tonight. Thank you. I wish to add my congratulations to our city manager. Martin, you are a wonderful asset to our city. Thank you for your open door policy, willing to listen to concerns, questions, and suggestions. Help brainstorm solutions, just problems, and follow through with issues. Congratulations and thank you. I do have one more thank you, very big thank you, that I wish to give to Jody Hawkins. I had an article that I needed to write and edit, and I was getting as much input as I could. And I was struggling with it and Jody could see my frustration. So she offered to read it and make some important improvements on it. It's very hard to acknowledge what you do yourself. I don't handle that well. She didn't have to do that, but she did. I totally appreciate the support she has been giving me as I work on my position as volunteer coordinator. It's been a challenge for me, it's been rewarding, and it's been sometimes frustrating. But I truly love helping the city and I wish to thank Jody. Also, I wanted to make sure everybody remembers this Thursday is Coffee with a Cop. This Thursday, eight thirty to eleven o'clock at Frost Donut Place. Please come join us. Thank you.
Thank you, Barb. Anyone else like to address the council in chambers or online? Okay, hearing none. Uh the council is now gonna recess to executive session to discuss potential litigation pursuant to RCW forty two point three zero point one one zero subsection one, little i. No action will be taken at the conclusion of the executive session. Uh we're going to start with fifteen minutes, so we will recess at seven thirty five and reconvene unless we extend at seven fifty. Am I correct? Yeah, that's right. So we'll now be in recess for, oh, I'm sorry, you know what? I've got three different clocks because the clock on this is different than the clock here. The clock says seven thirty eight, so we'll be recessed till seven fifty two. Okay, it is seven fifty. Oh, okay. Go ahead. It's seven fifty-two and the council has concluded its executive session, as I indicated at the outset, no action will be taken. And can someone else, there we go, okay, and with no other items on our agenda, we will adjourn the fifty-two. Thank you, see you in two weeks, next week, next week.
Yeah, did you guys end while I was trying to, like, it was not sending me over right for some reason?
Yep, we just ended, thank you, mayor.